Good morning. I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order for June 14th, 2022. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. I'd like to ask the pastor of Brant's Community Church, Pastor Daniel Helms, to come forward to give our invocation. And Commissioner Turner will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Lord, I am so grateful to live here in Putnam County. And I'm grateful for the men and women that are in leadership here in front of us. And so I pray for them as they have the incredible responsibility of representing the people in our county and leading our county in the direction that would be best and right for all of us. And so I lift them up to you right now. I pray for this meeting. I pray that you would guide them and direct them. And your word says that we are sinful and we're broken. And so I pray that in spite of that, you would use the men and women here in a way that would flourish our community. And so, Lord, I love you and I'm grateful for the hope that I have in your son, Jesus. And it's in his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Helms and thank you Commissioner Turner. Commissioners, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes that are posted in our agenda.
Second. Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, minutes pass. Commissioners, we're going to deviate a little bit on the agenda, so we'll skip port authority and the public hearings and move down to presentations. And I'd like to ask, Mr. Gerald Donnelly is not here today, but representing the VFW post 3349 is Mr. Doug Thompson and Gerald Schuler. If y'all would come forward to present the Sheriff's Deputy of the Year Award. And Sheriff Deloach, do you and some of your staff want to come up with Sergeant Sean Valdivia? Welcome this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like was stated there, we're from VFW post 3349. And we're here today to present our law enforcement, public servant award for the year. Each year, the VFW selects an EMT, law enforcement and firefighter personnel for this prestigious public service award. VFW National Law Enforcement Public Service Citation is awarded to individuals who serve in a municipal, county, state, or federal unit tasked with enforcement of the laws pertaining to their area of responsibility. Candidates must have demonstrated recognition for their, by their colleagues or those they serve, consistent excellence in the performance of their duties, consistent dedication to their official responsibilities over a period of the years, and continuous growth in responsibility and skills within their profession. Today, we're here to recognize Sergeant Sean Valdezis. I'll get it right here in a minute. As a VFW Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for Putnam County. Now turning it over to our Court of Master, Jerry Schuler, for the reading and citation.
Thank you District Commander Thompson. It's my pleasure to be here to be able to read this citation once again, that we do this on a regular basis. This is for the year 2021. This comes from Allison Waters Merritt at the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Valdivia is a former U.S. Marine who served on the front line in Afghanistan until his tour ended in 2009. Following his completion of military service, Sergeant Valdivia entered college and graduated with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice and attended Law Enforcement Academy. Valdivia then applied for and was hired with the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Utilizing his knowledge of field medicine and applying trauma kits to injured soldiers, Valdivia sought to incorporate a similar kit at the Sheriff's Office for deputies. After researching cost, effectiveness, and ease of use, Valdivia presented his ideas for the trauma kits, which were then adopted by the Sheriff's Office in August 2020. In November, Valdivia and Deputy Zagami were dispatched to a call involving a shooting. There, they encountered a male victim with multiple gunshot wounds. Both applied multiple trauma kits to close the wounds and tourniquets to prevent the victim from bleeding out. In January, Valdivia was presented with his third life-saving award for the November incident and was able to see the victim and his family the first time since the shooting. Without the trauma kits, the victim would have died. And earlier this year, Valdivia was promoted to his rank of sergeant. Sergeant Valdivia is dedicated to serving our community, but shies away from recognition. His military service and knowledge has helped him utilize his expertise to provide additional life-saving measures for our deputies while awaiting medical units. It's a Certificate of Appreciation Award to Sergeant Sean Valdivia and grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement in maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of citizens. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and our official seal of the veterans of foreign wars of the United States. Signed, Gerald Schuler, adjutant, Gerald Donnelly, commander.
Yeah, I didn't know if the sheriff wanted to say anything.
Congratulations.
Okay, let's go down.
Good morning, Sheriff.
I guess.
Oh.
Good.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much to the VFW for recognizing, you know, our local heroes throughout the
year for their achievements. Okay, commissioners, we'll move to, back up to port authority. And I'll recess the regular Board of County Commission meeting and convene the port authority meeting. We'll move down to the approval of the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes as presented in our agenda.
Second. Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Turner to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, we'll move down to public comment. We'll open up the public comment portion of the port authority item. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on port authority items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that portion and open it up for general discussion. Commissioners, any general discussion on port authority items or questions? Commissioner Adams, act.
I guess I'll say this again, I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on the fact that I am surprised again that we do not have anything under the port authority as far as activity or something that we're going to speak about as a board. And we have the ask about what the properties the port authority owns out there. I still feel we don't have a plan for the properties we're buying. And I know that we talk about it's port authority to generate economic development. But again, we're not using all the port authority money right now to, we don't have enough to purchase that property. So some of that is going to have to come out of the general fund unless we find some money somewhere else in the port authority from the sale of the other property. I think it just behooves of us as we approach the dredging and the other plans that we start talking about having a port manager and that we figure out how to get prop, items that come into the port to that other property. I think we need to start being a little more proactive on the port authority itself. And we should be having some robust conversations with regards to the port authority as we are the port authority as we go forward. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Adams, act. Okay, any other? Commissioner Rawls?
We've discussed having a meeting to lay out some strategy and come up with a plan. Have we made any headway towards that regard to the port?
I'll make that happen in July. Okay?
Okay.
July end, administrator side, we'll put that on, we can discuss that and get a plan together for maybe the first work.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we'll make it happen.
Work shop in July. Okay, any other commissioner comments? Okay, I'll adjourn the port authority meeting and reconvene the regular Board of County Commission meeting. And we'll move down to item four, public hearing, planning and zoning development apartment, planning and development, land development code text amendment CA 21-005.
Good morning commissioners. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. Today, this is the Land Development Code text amendment case number 21-005 for ordinance number 2022-007. This is the first reading of the proposed ordinance for amending language on allowed uses in the Land Development Code. The proposed ordinance is required by state statute to be heard before the B O C C twice. One of those hearings is required to be after 5:00 PM on a weekday. The application returned to the Board of County Commission on May 24th, 2022 to review staff's modified text amendment. The board requested minor additional edits and deferred the first hearing to the June 14th, 2022 public hearing. Those edits are provided in this presentation as well as an additional revision to allow the operational hours of a sawmill to be applied for everyone. And I'm just going to skip through to those revisions. Staff is recommending approval to the proposed changes to LDC section 4559 for commercial agricultural related uses. Beginning with off-site sawmills where wood is sourced from trees grown off-site and may be grown onsite, off-site sawmills must abide by the following supplemental standards. The sawmill must be located on a parcel of land equal to or exceeding 15 acres in size. The zoning board of adjustment may reduce the minimum acreage requirement provided the request otherwise complies with this section. Accordingly, the minimum acreage requirement shall not preclude any property owner with less acreage from requesting approval of a special use permit as allowed by the provisions of this section. The sawmill equipment must be maintained according to the manufacturer's original specifications. Sawmill operations within 500 feet of a residential structure located on a property not owned by the sawmill operator shall be required to provide sound mitigation in the form of an enclosure, a solid masonry wall, or other means of sound attenuation as allowed by the zoning board of adjustment. The sawmill shall not be in operation from dusk until dawn and is prohibited on Sundays and county-recognized holidays unless substantial evidence is presented to the zoning board of adjustment demonstrating the inability to comply with the foregoing standard hours of operation. The sawmill shall not be located on property within a recorded or unrecorded residential subdivision as defined by the Land Development Code. If the sawmill is to be accessed along a private roadway, the sawmill operator shall be responsible for maintenance of the roadway to the standards required for the particular road classification. Examples given would be a local collector of the private roadway from the point of access for the sawmill to the nearest county-maintained roadway. The sawmill operator shall be required to provide proof of a maintenance agreement to the Department of Planning and Development Services within 30 days of approval of a special use permit for this use. If the sawmill is to be accessed along a public roadway, then the sawmill operator shall be responsible for the provision of adequate roadway facilities to handle the impacts of the proposed development and maintain the county's adopted level of service standards concurrent with those impacts and compliant with the concurrency management systems of Article 5 and the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. Finally, the requirements of this section for allowance of an off-site sawmill as herein defined shall not be construed to require approval of a special use permit for the ancillary use of a saw for personal, non-commercial use on a property established with a principal residential use. That concludes the revised section.
Okay, all right, commissioners, questions? We'll start with Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just don't know why we're here on this, and I'll be honest with you. I think this is overreach of government. I think that we have unintended consequences that happen when we do things like this. I think we should wait for the Land Development Code. I think Mr. Morris was just really wanting a letter from staff or us that allows portable sawmills to be done, except for, you know, having somebody turn them in on codes. They just want our staff to say, yes, you can do this. I know your staff has said this to this board many times. If I was in that position, I'd pull up the YouTube and say, here's what y'all said. I just think it's going way too far, and I think we need to deal with it down the road. If we choose to deal with it today, I think we should have a carve-out. Where existing sawmills that are currently operational are exempt from all this because it's just too cumbersome, in my opinion. And that's how I feel about this. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, act.
I feel almost completely the same way. The attorney, not only you guys, but the county attorney also verified the fact that for the hobby mill, they, they're allowed to operate on their property as an extension of their homestead, and they're allowed to do that already. So again, I agree with that. If you brought that up, you could quote you guys as well as the county attorney as saying that, you know, this is authorized. I believe it's authorized as well. I know several people that operate them. I've helped people that operate them within the vicinity of my home. So I don't think we need to add any regulation to it whatsoever. I haven't heard from a commercial sawmill that's contacted me or anyone that's complained about any of the individual sawmills throughout the county as a commissioner in District Five or from any other area of the county. I haven't heard where we're overreaching to the commercial side, and I haven't heard where we don't supply enough allowance on the residential side. So I understand Mr. Morris's position. I think this, the fact that we're all saying that you can do it, Justin, is, I think enough. But that's where I stand as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
And I'm going to agree with the last two comments as well that, you know, we, I brought you an operator in that had concerns that currently operates in East Palatka. And I don't think that this addresses their concern. The last sentence as well, where it's, you got the word for personal use. So we're giving folks the option of having an ancillary sawmill, but if they wanted to sell that wood after they saw it, that's no longer for personal use. And I think that's going to create a problem for the hobby type cottage type industry folks that are out there sawing and resawing lumber to sell as, for, you know, just extra pocket change basically. But I think this is just going to be too restrictive for me to vote on this today, to be honest with you.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I totally agree with all the comments that's been made today. I realize that we asked you to go tweak it some and bring it back at the last time. So, but after, after thinking about that and what have you, I just don't think this needs to go forward today. I just don't think, I think it needs to be addressed during the land code rewrite when we do. And it needs to state in there unequivocally that existing sawmills are grandfathered in and that they're exempt from this statute and what have you because we're trying to, we're trying to fix it where one situation is going to affect anybody else that's been doing it for many years with, with no issues whatsoever. So, Ms. Chairman, I move that we just, just remove this from the agenda and we deal with it during the Land Development Code as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. Okay. I couldn't say it any better than my fellow commissioners have said on this. And the process has been kind of long, but you know, sometimes you, you need to take the extra time. So this actually went to the Planning Commission, back to us, back to the Planning Commission, and back to us, and back to staff. We appreciate everything that you've done, but if the commission can't feel comfortable with it forward, I think we're making the right decision today. So before I move forward with that, because I've got a motion by Commissioner Turner and a second by Commissioner Hall, Harvey, and Adams, act, I need to have public comment probably before the vote. Okay, so we'll open it up for public comment. So any individual wishing to come forward to make public comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Justin Morris, 180 Stokes Landing Road. I appreciate the concern from everybody, and I'm in, I'm in agreement with you guys on the, it needs to go to the.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, your mic's not on.
Yeah, it is. Just pull it closer to you, Justin.
Got it now?
Yeah.
I feel better? I, I agree with you guys, it should, it should go to the Land Development Code. My intention in this whole thing was, actually the section that's been omitted in this whole thing, which was the description of Ag. General Sawmills for Personal Use. That was, that was the ultimate goal of this. That's a lot more involved, and in my opinion, addressing the stuff on the commercial side, which was never the intent of this, this Land Development Code change. I identified a gaping hole, what I felt was a gaping hole in the Land Development Code and how they address sawmills. They don't have any kind of definition of a personal use mill. They don't have a definition of what is commercial use, exactly what, what you're talking about, Commissioner Rawls, about if a man does a little bit of something on the side, is that really a commercial use? Until the Land Development Code gets that clearly identified, and hopefully, when you guys redo that, we can identify that in such a way that it does address those cottage industries. It doesn't adversely affect, you know, it doesn't apply undue burden of commercial use onto these people that are just trying to make a little bit extra money until that can get addressed in the Land Development Code. I'm, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with you guys, but the original intent of all of this application was that small-scale personal use mills get addressed as personal tools, not as commercial development, commercial use. So that's, that's all I have to say. I appreciate, appreciate the time and effort of staff and appreciate you guys taking a look at it and kind of understanding what's going on here. But down the road, as we think about this, the purpose of all that has been said over the past almost year in this is related to letting people use their stuff for personal use and not be burdened with the, with the restrictions of full-on commercial industrial type applications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. Okay, anybody else? Please come forward if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. And pull the mic out, speak, you're going to have to pull it way up. Speak clearly, clearly.
No, I'm Ben Tillman, 101 Turner, just had a question. Why is staff, what is your name again?
But direct the question to me, sir.
Okay, my question is to Gabriel, how much lead do you put in a saw blade to keep it from burning? You don't know?
He shouldn't be able. It's not a question, okay.
Okay, the point is, he's wanting to put maintenance in this code, and he doesn't know anything about maintenance. It's not government's place to tell sawmill owners how to maintain their equipment.
I agree.
And I agree with what you're saying. I appreciate y'all and thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
Something about that real quick.
Okay, Commissioner Adams, act.
So the reason that came up was more around running a sawmill with a wide-open exhaust, something like that. That was a noise thing that we asked them to look into. So it was under that guy, just so you're aware, it wasn't about the blade or anything. So we directed him to do that if we were to pass something. So just so you didn't take the exhaust off and run it full bore to piss off your neighbor or something. So that's why it's in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Adams, act. Any other public comment? Okay, we got a proper motion on the floor and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay. Thank you, we'll move down to second public hearing. Oh, it's 9:30. Okay, thank you. Or you might need to get those times a little bit bigger for Commissioner Pickens as he ages. Or maybe put them in highlighting red or something like that. Okay, so we'll move down to public comment on agenda items. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to the consent agenda, gentlemen. Commissioners, any items you wishing to push and I'll, I'll pull, I'll, I'll start with Commissioner Adams, act.
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I have none today.
Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Pickens, I would like to pull item G, please.
Okay, and Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
Second. Okay, we got, and I.
Aye.
Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Got it right? A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and I.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, passes. Item G, Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, there's on page 150 of your agenda, under the, in consideration of the four. of the foregoing, item two, the last sentence, Legal's not here to explain that, but I've spoken with some of our department heads this morning, and the way I believe that's written, we're trying to allow this thing, this easement, to be able to have the people encroach into our easement. I don't have a problem with any of the other stuff, and any future expansions that they want to do, they need to go before the zoning board. But it clearly, it says, "Grantee also agrees to require, to acquire any required variances or permits for existing structures which do not satisfy required setback." Well, we already know they're not able to require the required setback, so we're almost setting them up for failure. So, if I could, if we could table this for the next meeting, and I could get clarity from our attorney, would be the preferable path, in my opinion.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Turner?
Yes. Just from my understanding, what it's saying is, is that any new construction couldn't encroach into it, but we're allowing them to encroach with the existing construction. Isn't that what it says?
No, because on number three, it says the grantee may not place any additional structures.
Additional.
So, it's going to the additional on three, but on two, it acts like it's, we're going to send them back to the zoning board for something, in my opinion. I don't know that for sure. I just want to make sure we do that.
I'm game. Why don't you make a motion to table it till the next meeting, and you can give you time to talk to Rich about it? Because I'm with you. The intent of this was to allow him to encroach with the current drain field and what have you, but not encroach in the future...
Right.
...with a new building or do whatever. That was the intent.
Because his building's out of compliance as well.
Yeah, exactly.
But I thought this allows that for that, this one time.
Right. That's correct. We let them encroach with what they have at the current time and what they need for the, for the drain field, but we don't let them encroach with future building or whatever may be. So, if that's, you probably...
And they have to connect to ours.
...make the motion. I don't know if it needs a second, but if it does, I'll certainly second your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this until the next meeting, so we can get clarity from our attorney on that one sentence.
I'll second it.
All right. Got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey to table this item, and a second by Commissioner Turner, and Administrator Suggs has comments.
Yes, sir. I've been in conversation with our county attorney. I apologize. He got caught up at a meeting this morning. Will be here as soon as he can get here. But he asked if we want to table this, if we could just table it to the afternoon workshop. If there's any further discussion, maybe we can go ahead and make the motion at the afternoon workshop to go ahead and complete this item today instead of putting it off another, another...
I'll amend my motion to the, table it to the afternoon workshop.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. We've got a proper amended motion and a proper amended second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. We'll look at this this afternoon, sometime in our two o'clock meeting. Okay. All right. 9:31. We'll move to the second public hearing, adoption of resolution of vacation, or vacate portion of Palm Street and North Third Avenue at Interlaken.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a point of privilege?
Yes, Commissioner.
Mrs. Rude, who, Barbara Rude, who started this vacation, had some family emergencies up north and had to leave town, didn't want her absence to be seen as that she didn't care, she just truly could not be here today. And she sent me a notice that she would like for this to go through, and I just wanted, she wanted me to share that with the board members, that her absence wasn't about not wanting it, it was just because she had some family emergencies.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Okay. Mike Nimitz?
Good morning, Commissioners. The Public Works Department is requesting the board's approval and the chairman's signature on the resolution authorizing the vacation of a portion of Palm Street and a portion of North Third Avenue. The board agreed to move forward with this process at the April 26 Transportation Workshop and the May 10 B.O.C.C. meeting. The Public Works Department has no objections to the proposed vacation and recommends the board approve this vacate request.
Move approval.
Okay. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner to move this item forward, and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey.
Do we need to name the resolution?
Do I need that?
I probably need to read the name of the resolution, don't I? Putnam County Resolution Number 22-048, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, vacating portions of First Street and Interlaken Avenue in the Matchett Park subdivision in accordance with Section 336.09 Florida Statute, closing and abandonment of roads, authority in Section 336.12 Florida Statute, closing and abandonment of roads, termination of easement, conveyance of fees.
Second.
Okay. Got a proper motion to move this vacation forward, and by Commissioner Turner, and a second by Commissioner Harvey. Okay. This time, I'll open it up for public comment. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on this particular item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nimitz.
Good.
Okay. Did I give you anything?
No, you're good.
Good. Okay. We'll move down to item nine. Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have nothing this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Matt, I'll go ahead and make this comment on our workshop this afternoon. I believe your item is up first.
Yes.
If it's okay, I'd like to move up the two items below that, which has to do with security cameras and then the chillers, to move those up first, and we'll get the discussion on the bi-weekly payroll third. Is that okay?
Sure. Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Appointments? Commissioners, any appointments you would like to make today? Commissioner Rawls?
Yes. I'll be putting Giovanni Palencia on the fair board.
Okay. On the fair board? Okay. Is that, that's a district appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Is he on his paperwork? Okay.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Adamsak?
I have none.
Okay. And I have none either, so... And I appreciate you putting Giovanni on the fair board. He is just a very active young man, his family is, and he'll do a great job at pretty much anything you put him at. He really will.
You know, I was, request came from three different board members because of the use of the facility by the Hispanic community for Kinsietas. They, it made sense to me that, you know, it would allow more inclusion, and I think he'd be a good fit. He seems, just in talking to him a few times, I've met with him, he seems like a very hard worker, very dedicated.
Okay. Okay. We'll move down to item 11, public comment on miscellaneous items. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on miscellaneous items? This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will gauge a debate or deliberation on matters on which the board received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, if possible, and if you would, speak clearly into the microphone and give us your name and address, and I thought I recognized you. You're Mr. Pelfrey, right?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. James Pefley, 6505 Latstring Road, Melrose, Florida. The Vice President of Historic Melrose Incorporated. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit established in 1985. I'm here to thank you for what you do and for the collaboration we've had with Melrose Heritage Park, prettiest park in America. Historic Melrose Incorporated purchased three parcels in downtown Melrose from Don McBride on March 1, 2002. In downtown Melrose, we raised $170,000 and borrowed $180,000 from M&amp;S Bank, and we acquired the lots at $350,000. We won a State of Florida grant with the Florida Communities Trust for $180,000 with the proviso that park ownership is ceded to Putnam County. In 2003, Commissioner Nancy Harris and our president at the time, Dr. Mark Barrow, my father-in-law, he signed a development and management agreement, and it's been a terrific partnership ever since. Wonderful communication and collaboration with the Parks and Recs Department, particularly Kevin Stevens, great guy. After that, we designed and developed the master plan by landscape architect Richard Berry, and carried that out. We relocated, restored a small building at M&amp;S Bank and moved it to the park, called it the Dower History Center. We purchased and installed a playground, playground at the southeast corner of the park for $25,000. We designed, coordinated construction, and paid $11,000 towards a pavilion. Putnam paid for $19,000. HMI purchased and installed a $9,000 fountain and $2,500 brick walkway. We installed three monuments, Civil War, World War I, World War II. The project manager was the late, great Jimmy Price. Lovely memorials there. We installed dozens of Florida native plants and trees. We just planted $1,000 live oak to commemorate the 20th anniversary of the park. We purchased and installed sprinklers. Since 2002, HMI has maintained the sprinklers, and the county has generously maintained the well. We installed electrical outlets and nine acorn lights. Dr. Joe Rush donated $15,000. We coordinated the construction of an ADA compliant bathroom. Oh, that's three minutes.
You're coming.
All right. And Joe Rush donated $42,000. We paid $4,500 for the septic field and $11,000 for the site prep. We put on a new roof. We took care of the irrigation, and up until December, we paid all the electric bills, but y'all have taken that over. So, thank you. We love you and want to keep the communication, collaboration going. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have the adopt a park agreement to discuss at our workshop this afternoon. So, thank you for everything that y'all do. Commissioner Harvey?
I wanted to say one funny thing, and then I want to thank you. I've never seen a speaker who kept their own time. Usually, that doesn't work. That doesn't work in our arena, but congratulations to you for being aware of that while you're speaking. I'm very impressed with that. But let me say this about HMI and the work they do. Melrose Park, it's just wonderful to have such a great partner that goes on out there, and that park is well taken care of. And that one and Flora Home are like the model parks in this area right now, and Flora Home is trying to catch up. Actually, they stole some of your language, so they'll be presenting some things to us soon about that. But it's just nice to have partners in the community. It makes our job a lot easier to do that. So, I want to thank you for the hard work. Your father-in-law was a good friend, and thanks for all the hard work you do out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
Yeah. I'd like to echo one, but Commissioner Harvey, you said Boswick is doing the same thing. I met with them last night, and it seems like as the citizens are getting involved in these parks and in the community buildings, it only benefits the citizens, takes the burden off of us. So, kudos for what you're doing. You have a great-looking facility there. Being proximal to Mossman Hall is really nice, so that you, between Mossman Hall and that park, you really have a nice venue for a lot of different things. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for everything y'all do. Okay. Move down to Ms. Crystal McGregor. Please state your name and address for record, Ms. McGregor.
My name is Crystal McGregor. I live at 135 Sunset Drive. I'd like to read the statement to you, so I don't miss anything.
Could you pull it back up? You can't hear me?
You have to pull that.
Pull it towards me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay. "In the last four years, our neighbors have changed their land adjacent to and across from our property to the detriment of our property. Due to their efforts, our properties become a stormwater retention pond. Two neighbors in the past four years have added 30 to 40 truckloads of dirt, sand, concrete, rock, and sod to change the ground levels, water retention, drainage, and surface of their properties to the disadvantage of our property. They have added bulkheads with concrete fill areas, removed trees damaged by the killing of the roots during the bulkhead work, added a concrete drive, septic garage with concrete base, among other things. The latest addition of illegally paving a county Class II road narrower than the driveway was intentionally paved and pitched to drain into our front yard and driveway. The road is no longer permeable, allowing the water to seep or drain through it. The French drain in front of our driveway was also filled in and paved over, preventing water coming into our driveway to drain away from the area. Our home is on a large lot on the wide St. John's River with an 80-foot dock and boathouse overlooking the Ocala National Forest. Our home is a custom-built stick house with a garage containing a work area and storage. Our side yard contains 30-plus trees and bushes, including figs, peaches, oranges, grapefruit, lemons, lime, blueberries, blackberries, grapes, raspberries, kumquats, and mulberries. We have a septic system which conforms to current standards. We are upset and appalled by the future destruction and damage that will occur from turning our property into stormwater retention pond. Georgetown has 159.8 days, rain days, with an accumulation of 21.93 inches of water, and with two additional properties and driveways and the road draining onto the property, our property's underwater. Mr. Troxel's letter stated that the county takes into account where this water will go and either crown or pitch the road in the proper direction to keep from putting excess water where it's not supposed to go. He also stated, "The county cannot verify if the pitch of the road was considered when placing the asphalt, and therefore, we do not know where a preponderance of this water will travel to." We are requesting that the county demolish the asphalt and turn it back into the dirt and millings that was there previously at each parcel owner's expense. It was suggested at the April 26 board meeting that we should engage in a civil action against our neighbors who had illegally paved the road without the county's knowledge, input, permit, or approval. We strongly disagree." Is that my three minutes? I've got one sentence left.
You'll wrap it up. Yes, ma'am.
This is a county issue involving a county Class II road. We do not agree to incur the cost of attorneys, engineers, surveyors, and a paving company, among other expenses, to alleviate the county from its responsibility to enforce the code and laws of Putnam County. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Commissioner Rawls?
Yeah. So, we did, we did take this up. You know, I think we were all shocked that somebody illegally paved one of the roads. It was done without our knowledge, obviously. The comment that was made about, you know, you having a civil action, you have a civil action against your neighbors. If, if, if they encroach on your property, we don't, we can't do anything about that. can't do anything about that. I can't tell you where we are in the process of fixing the road, tearing the road up, or doing whatever we're gonna do, but I can only encourage you, if I was in your position, I would be talking to someone about making any amends they have to. They can't illegally dump water into your property, obviously. If there was a swale feature there before on, on the class two road and they filled it in or ditch, that's obviously a problem. You mentioned a French drain.
French drain in front of our driveway.
Okay, did you put that French drain there?
It's been there, it's been there ever since we've been there, and it would drain the water, excess water coming off the road into some area and then move it off onto the side of the property.
You're describing a ditch, or is it full of rock?
Nope, just a small swale.
Okay.
And it's on your easement.
Then you no longer have drainage at that point, just?
Nope, they covered it up, filled it in.
Okay, well, I, I can't speak to her in the process, maybe, well, you have a message that's gonna come up, maybe he can, but?
No, he's, oh, we, we've talked.
I, I don't, I don't think that we as a board can be responsible for the, if there's any damage caused by the acts of others. We didn't give permission for that to happen.
I understand that, I realize it.
Okay, all right, Mike, before I go to you, and just an update, I believe is all you're gonna give, but let me, Commissioner Harvey had a comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I concur with Commissioner Rawls. Somebody does something illegally on our property, I don't know if we can be held responsible for that. I think the contractor bears a lot of responsibility here at this point, so I'm really waiting to hear what Mr. Nimitz has to say, but, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that these people took upon themselves to do something that, that has hurt you, and it hurts you bad, and, but we do have some ordinances in place that they can't overfill their property if they drain it on somebody else's, so we do have some of that in place, but I'd like to hear what Mr. Nimitz has to say, and I'll conclude my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, Mike?
Yes. Commissioners, just a brief update, our surveyors have been on site and have collected field data, and we're performing a review and analysis of the conditions out there, and we should have some recommendations to make, as well as an accurate picture of what we're dealing with out there.
How long, Mike, do you think?
Probably within the next two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. All right, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Nimitz, my concern is, you know, we're self-insured through a trust that I serve on in the state of Florida, and, and, you know, this road, from my understanding, is very narrow compared to what our standard width is. It's half of that, correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
You know, my, my big concern is we allow this to stay, and, and there's something happens on that property. You know, by omission or omission, we have allowed this to take place. That's what concerns me very greatly. Now, I wish it was never done, so I just want to voice my concerns about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls, and we'll wrap this up.
All right, so, is there a possibility we're looking at leaving what's been in place there, or are we looking at tearing it up?
Again, we, we're going to collect the data, look at what we have in place, and see if it creates any adverse conditions and things of that nature, and report to the Board where our findings are, and take all that into consideration.
But I think the lady standing behind you would tell you to save, save your energy because it's created adverse conditions, conditions they'd have experienced prior to the road being paved.
Ours isn't the only issue, there's also the issue of, there's about four inches of leeway between the road and the swale or the drainage ditch coming between our road and Helen. They've also put up speed signs, they've put up speed bumps.
Who is "they"?
The other seventeen people who live on the road, I guess.
Okay, you know it's from Public Works, okay.
No, not you guys.
Are the signs legal?
You knew nothing about it.
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of issues that are going on out there right now, and, and pull the worst is on top of it. They're gonna do their due diligence, and once they've done all their research and, and collected all their data, we'll bring this back to the Board after we meet with, with these folks and the attorney as well at the same time to figure out what avenues or what approach we may need to take to, to resolve any issues that the county may have out there.
And I agree with that, because there's still data to be, to be gotten, and then you'll present options to us of, of what, what, what can be, what can be done, so. Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Chairman, that's basically what I was gonna say, is we just need to wait until Public Works has done their thing, and then find out if there's way, if there's a way to, to rectify this lady's issue and not lose what the other people did, because, yeah, they paved a road and it probably wasn't best or whatever, but if we can make it where it's not hurting anybody and it's not detriment to the county, there's no sense in us making them tear it up just because they did it without a permit. That's kind of cutting your nose off Spite's face, so I think we need to let them go on and do what they want to do and see, or Public Works do the research and then find out is there a way to rectify the problems that are, that they created down at the end of the road, and if they, if we can get all that together, fine. If not, we'll take it and do what we got to do, but until that point, I just think we're just shooting at a dartboard that there's no lines on at the moment. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls, and we'll wrap it up.
I, I agree with, with most of what you're saying. I think the, the problem here is we're, we're gonna open up Pandora's Box. We have minimum standards that we require everyone else to meet. If we set up an MSBU, their roads must be paved to, to this extent, with this width, blah, blah, blah. I don't, I don't know what happens if, 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 if we go down this road, pardon the pun, and allow this to stay or, or not make corrective actions. I, I think at that point, what stops anybody else from doing this with their class two road, when they get tired of waiting for us to pave it and just go take it on their own? That's, that's all I'm saying, I think we need, we really?
I think, I think with, if they pulled a permit and got a right-of-way permit, we would have probably allowed them if they did it to our specification.
Right.
The, the problem here is they did it without a permit, and so I think that's what it comes down to, so.
Okay, Mike? Has it been cored yet?
Has it what?
Been cored? Do we know how thick the asphalt is and that?
Have you guys read Mr. Troxel's letter?
No, I've not seen it.
Okay, well, I've got copies of it for you. He came down, I was here on the twenties.
Yes, ma'am, this, this is not, this is not gonna go, it, it, we're just, we've got a situation and we understand it.
Mr. Nimitz?
Mike, I'm asking you, if you can with Public Works, is get some pictures of this road, because what we're talking about is when you talk about a class two road, would you show me a picture if, of a class two road today, would it be this road? It would not be this road. This is nothing more than a lane. I don't know if two cars can pass.
Can't.
Without touching mirrors on this, so this is a completely different issue. We've never had this before, so I, I agree with the Commissioners and, and County Administrator, finish getting your research as soon as you can, bring it back to, but I'd like for the Commissioners to, to seed this particular road and Helen Place beside it. It's just a unique situation, how it became a county road is beyond me. It really, really is. So, thank you for your comments, and we'll, we'll hopefully get your situation rectified as soon as we can.
You can't bring that up here, it has to go through.
No, it has to go through. Okay. Any other public, public comment on miscellaneous items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, and we'll move down to closing comments. County Administrator Terry Suggs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no comments this morning, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Comments, start with Commissioner Adamsack.
Yeah, don't have a lot today, just very appreciative of this community and everything that we have going on, and it's very exciting times, in my opinion. There's always something to do here on the weekends and whatnot. I mean, we are an agricultural outdoors community. Obviously, people are looking for a mega mall or for a IMAX theater and stuff, this isn't the place to be, and that's why we, some of us choose to be here is because that stuff isn't here, and I love it and look forward to every weekend and every night that I can do something with my kids or our community and enjoy the outdoors and everything that Putnam County has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Adamsack. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, what I'd like to bring up today is an item about Parks and Rec. I can't really talk to the Parks Committee at the moment because it's not an advertised meeting where another Commissioner can show up to usually, and, and you know, as you well know, you're the chairman, so I know that, that staff has been working diligently to try to get an answer from Tallahassee on if we could take part of the grant money, that the, I think it was a FERDAP grant, and move, move it from the park where the basketball court is down by Public Works and use part of that to do some, some stuff for the Beeden Ball Park. I would make a request that the Parks and Rec Committee actually bring that as one of their topics, that we could do some additional work to the Beeden Ball Park. It was given to us. All we've got in it right now is a sign, is what we've got in it. I think it would be a perfect place to have a pavilion, a picnic table, maybe a small playground. It's right beside the, the bike path, so they can use it as one of their destinations to, to stop and have lunch if they're riding, or other members of the community, which there's no other park available in that area that you can do that to, so I would like to try and either apply for another FERDAP grant, or if we, it looks like we don't meet the criteria, or we can't use the one from down the road to do this, then I would like to propose that we start looking at trying to do something with that park, seeing how there's not another one anywhere in that area that somebody can use to do this, to do this with, so anyhow, I just wanted to ask Parks and Rec Committee if they would discuss that and what their recommendations may be for trying to do something with that park. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Commissioner Rawls?
Yeah, I met yesterday with the City of the CRA, and we talked about the, the Blue Crab Festival, and, you know, they were able to pull this thing together in a very short amount of time. They're starting now to look at plans for next year, so from what I can see anecdotally, it looked like a, a very large turnout of, of folks, looked like everybody had a great time. So, as they start to plan, I hope we can be part of that next year and participate with them in that, but otherwise, I think we had a very safe and enjoyable Labor Day weekend, or Memorial Day weekend, and just got a lot of heat in front of us. Today's heat index is like a hundred and two with the humidity, so I need to remind everybody to stay hydrated and out of the sun as much as possible, but I think, as Paul said, we're very blessed to be living in the community we're living in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. July fourth in Anilacan, we'll be on Monday, July fourth, and the festivities start early in the morning with fishing tournaments, but, and then about two o'clock, and then we'll come back in the evening for the old street dance and the fireworks display. I remember fondly as a little boy, coming from Francis, old Gainesville Highway, going out there for the street dance, and it was a great time, so if you can plug that into your schedules, please come, and it's, it's a wonderful event, and we'll move forward with that. I have been looking at mowing around the county as I've been putting things up around the county. Do see our, we are seeing our mowers out there, and they're actually able to mow in places they haven't been able to mow in a long time due to no water in the ditches, so that's been very positive, watching the mowers do extra that they haven't been able to do in a long time. I would encourage Public Works, if you can put the mowers out there as fast as you can, again, there's no water standing anywhere. The only place I found any, any water quality at all or water in the soil was over near Hastings and some potato fields out there, so the rest of it, you can't get dirt out of it with a post hole digger, it just won't come out, so you almost have to scoop it out with your hands. So, right now is a good time to get these ditches done that we haven't been able to do in a long, long time, and want to wish everybody Happy Father's Day. This is coming up this coming Sunday, and we're gonna be celebrating Saturday evening with our family and, and just a nice time, but fathers are important to this community and just like mothers are, but this is our weekend, gentlemen, and enjoy your time together, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Minister Suggs, you wanted to make another comment?
Oh.
A very important comment.
I thought, yes, sir, I'd be more than happy to. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome a new member to the Putnam County family. Baby Anna was born just recently to our IT Director, Mr. James Ritchie and his, his wonderful wife, so James is not here today, of course, he's at home taking care of both mama and the two babies, so congratulations to Mr. Ritchie and his family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing us to do that.
Wow, that's impressive.
Thank you. Also want to echo what Commissioner Harvey was talking about of the mowing, Mike, and I have reached out to Eric Oxendine, who's a local product from the South End, and he was moved up to mowing supervisor, is doing a really good job in mowing where, where they're supposed to mow, and it is extremely nice to have one of the inmate crews back, and so they're able to pick up the trash and do weed eating, and I understand we're getting close to maybe getting a couple of more supervisors so we can get some more crews out there, but I just want to say kudos to the mowing crew, and also some ditch cleaning down in my area, and they're doing a really, really good job, and I truly appreciate it, it's very noticeable, so. All the equipment is in District One, go ahead and say that, so.
Exactly, that's why nothing can get done anywhere else. Different world.
I just want everybody to know it's been utilized properly, and it's very appreciated. Okay, my second thing, and this has been going on for really a couple of years, COVID really stalled this project, but this Angel Dukes, who is from South Putnam and heavily involved in the A. Philip Randolph Association. Philip Randolph was born in Crescent City, and he was really the civil rights leader before Martin Luther King, worked with Martin Luther King, and his father pasted a church, the Union Bethel AME Church in Crescent City back in the day, and so we've had a, a presentation and a unveiling of the signs a few months ago in Eva Lyons Park, and we'll finalize this by unveiling the signs that are placed on Old Highway Seventeen from Junction Road to New Seventeen, which is dedicated to A. Philip Randolph Memorial Highway. We'll do that Saturday at ten a.m. Commissioners, you should get a, a invitation for that, and then after that, they'll move to Eva Lyons Park for a celebration there with music and different speakers, and then at ten forty-five, she's asked the local churches to ring a bell honoring A. Philip Randolph and Juneteenth, which will be Sunday, the nineteenth. Their church starts at eleven a.m., and then after church, they'll move to Eva Lyons Park for the Juneteenth celebration for most of the day in Crescent City, so just want to bring everybody to that attention, and she was working really hard getting this passed, and I appreciate the Commissioners and all of our staff that worked to move this forward to get this to be a memorial highway in honor of A. Philip Randolph. So, Commissioners, any other further business that come before this Board? Okay, we stand adjourned.